Kate, may we have the roll call, please?
Certainly. Gary Cunningham.
Here.
Patty Crowan.
Here.
Doug Bryson.
Here.
Marie McFarland.
Here.
Sean Keir.
Here.
Miles Schlesinger.
Here.
And Steve Griffiths.
Here.
Do we have any agenda changes or revisions?
We do not.
All right. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of our meeting on July 3, 2018?
I motion to approve the minutes for the July 3 meeting.
Is there a second?
I second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Are there any public comments on non-agenda items or matters not involving a public hearing? Seeing none.
I'm sorry. Can I? You went so quick. There's just one correction in the minutes, Kate. On packet page six, which is one, two, three, the fourth page, under the motion to close the public hearing, it says discussion and it says Chair Cunningham. I don't think Steve's been replaced.
Oh, got it. Thank you. Sorry, Steve.
We don't need to revote, is that what I'm thinking?
No, 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 I just...
Okay. Thank you. So we do have a final order tonight, and I have a script to read before we take action on that. It's 5.1, the final order for 2018-02, the Lincoln Palisades Phase Four Preliminary Master Plan. Let's see here. The commission is about to vote on a final order concerning the preliminary master plan for Phase Four of the Lincoln Palisades Planned Unit Development. The applicant and property owner is Alpha Building Ventures. The final order is a written record of the commission's decision that followed its public hearing, deliberation, and tentative oral decision made on July 3, 2018. The planning commission's decision is to approve the request with conditions. A final order reports the findings of the commission, explaining how the decision relates to the evaluation criteria. It includes a voted vote of each member and briefly states the basis for any minority vote. The vote on a final order is not meant to be a second vote on the subject of the hearing. If the final order accurately reflects the findings of the majority and the decision, commissioners should approve the final order. Is there a motion to adopt final order 2018-02 for the decision on file PUD 2018-01?
I move we adopt final order 2018-02.
Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right. May we have a roll call vote, please?
All right. McFarland.
Yes.
Keir.
Yes.
Bryson.
Yes.
Schlesinger.
Yes.
Cunningham.
Yes.
Crowan.
Yes.
And Griffiths.
Yes.
Motion carries.
All right. A notice of decision will be mailed to the applicant, property owners, and all others who participated in this hearing, in person or in writing. This decision is appealable to the city council. All right. There are no public hearings or deliberations tonight. We have some old business, coastal resiliency grant. Deborah, are you going to talk to us about that?
Mark is going to lead us on this one. Would you rather that he stays here or would you like him to go down to the testimony table? What's easier for you?
What's your preference? Right there?
I don't have a preference.
I don't have a preference.
Okay.
I think I'm on. Okay, this discussion is more or less a continuation from the presentation that you had on June 19 at the meeting on a coastal resiliency grant, if you remember that. Meg Reed from Department of Land Conservation Development, DLCD, was here and led that presentation. Tonight, more specifically, we are asking you to review a recommendation. Well, in the previous to that, in May, May 14, the city council designated the planning commission to act as the project advisory committee. So in that capacity, tonight, we are asking you, the project management team, is asking you to review and consider our recommendation for the use of some of those funds from the project. And I'll talk specifically about what that is, but that's the gist of why we're here. Just to give a quick recap of what this project is about, it's basically resiliency in the face of a tsunami. We're trying to determine what we can do now to make the impact less and to give us a better chance of getting through the tsunami event. There are really four different focuses, foci, of this project. One is what's called a tsunami evacuation facilities improvement plan, usually abbreviated in some of the documents as T E F I P. That plan, I think of, is sort of a master plan for our evacuation system. It's the type of thing that we lay down and then we'll refer to later, much like you do other master plans. So we'll talk about projects that we don't anticipate happening in the short term, but that need to happen over a period of time. The, I'll just call it the TEFIP, the Facilities Improvement Plan, will provide an analysis of all aspects of our evacuation system. Everything, and I think, for me, evacuation system is more appropriate than facilities. Facility sounds physical. We're talking broader than that. We will touch upon by community in Lincoln City signage, actual facilities, or recommendations that could involve roads, bridges, assembly areas, outreach efforts. So it's a broad look at what we need to do to be better prepared, but specifically with a focus on evacuation. So that's one aspect of this overall project. That's the one we're going to talk a bit about tonight. But the others, just to mention them, and we talked a bit about this last time, and I believe you got a sample code for a tsunami overlay zone. That will be one of the important products that comes out of this project. Another will be the incorporation of tsunami resilience, if you will, into the comprehensive plan. And that will, part of that will be taking the natural hazard mitigation plan that you looked at a couple years ago and incorporating those issues into the comprehensive plan in a much more detailed way than they have been in the past. And the last is really a, it's a modeling exercise called Beat the Wave that the Department of Geology and Mineral Industries, Dogami, will prepare. And they've done this in a number of coastal communities. This is a scientific model, and this will, we're not sure when it will happen. We're thinking now maybe early fall, but this will provide input into these other three pieces as well. But the Beat the Wave, I guess one way to think of it, the way I kind of think of it, is it will give an answer to the question, if you're standing at this point in Lincoln City, whatever point, how long will it take you to get to safe ground walking at a given speed? That's one way to think of it. And all that would be defined, and then it would be modeled accordingly. In addition to that, they also will prepare models for how long, what's the delay between the earthquake that will precede the tsunami and the actual first waves or wave arising? So that's the Beat the Wave modeling. It will provide input into the other pieces, but again, it probably won't happen. We thought at one point be early, about now, but it looks like it'll be about September. They're getting backed up. But there are examples of them having done this, this analysis elsewhere, and we could point you to those. Cannon Beach, I mean, there's a number of them. It's interesting stuff. So what we're looking at is this grant, it's a $14,000 matching grant. 14,000 of it will basically be in-kind staff time, our time, and Richards primarily, but Sandy Gruber for GIS, et cetera. So part of it will be that. The other is more flexible, and we can use it however we want to further the goals of the project. And that's the recommendation that we want to talk about tonight. Just to get to it, that recommendation is that we use that 14,000, it's not a big sum of money and maybe some other funds, but we use that to focus on the evacuation system, specifically in Cutler City. And the reason, the rationale for that is that we anticipate, that is the one area in Lincoln City where the evacuation options are not as good maybe as they are in other areas. It's more of a challenge. That's the area where maybe we need some more creative thought, and it could even be engineering. It could be vertical evacuation, could be recommended. This little project, obviously, is not going to build anything, but we're looking for recommendations. So we'll want a scientific approach with geology background. We're hoping to get out of Dogami. But it could be strengthening roads, it could be vertical evacuation, it could have to do with the assembly area, it could be any number of other safe haven up on the assembly area. It could be a willing seller program for relocation. I'm not suggesting that, but I'm saying that, that's the idea, is that we look at it in a very broad sense and come up with some recommendations. That would be a first step. Obviously, it's not going to result in building anything, but it would be a first step to at least get priorities and get the community involved to say, yeah, this is what makes sense. Then, my thinking is, there are some hazard mitigation grants that fund both planning and projects, as separate projects. If we did a hazard mitigation planning grant, we could, that's where the detailed engineering of whatever the recommendation, whatever the solution would come in, and then we would need the big funds, which would be another project grant. So we're looking out a few years here, another project grant to, again, implement, you know, whatever recommendations came out of those studies. So I guess that's what we're asking for your input on, and obviously, we can discuss a lot of that. I just kind of glossed over it to a large extent. So I guess it's a question of the rationale, if that seems an adequate priority. Yeah?
I have a question.
Great.
How are you, are you going to be bringing in some of the residents to work with this too? And how are you selecting them, if you are, with the study?
How? Well, there's a couple things happening in parallel here with me. The bigger project, the bigger project will take place all over Lincoln City, so that would be residents from a number of areas. As far as how they're selected, I, I'm not sure exactly how. I mean, obviously, we need people that want to volunteer to put time in, but they're selecting people to kind of be part of maybe many discussions, but then there's also outreach that's maybe where, I mean, to me, that's kind of my, what I'm thinking of is outreach events where you can really get some discussion and determine what priorities are. So in this specific, this narrow case, this specific consulting activity feeds into this largest, larger tsunami evacuation facilities improvement plan. It's a portion of it, it's not all of it, but it's a significant portion for Cutler City, and then a lot of that same work would be done throughout the city.
Compared to other villages in Lincoln City, Cutler City really does not have easy access to any out-of-tsunami-zone areas, correct?
Right. Cutler City for us is a bit more like what we see in Seaside and Cannon Beach and those areas, where the models that Dogami prepares factor in things like liquefaction, subsidence, bridge quality, and whether they're likely to be in place. In other words, these are real models, if you will, and variable, and that's one area where we have the longest stretch maybe for people to get out. And the focus, a cursory study, or maybe just opinions from Dogami, are that most people would be able to get out and reach high ground. So it's not as desperate maybe as the corners of Seaside. There are some specific areas that are really problematic. However, we do have sizable, vulnerable populations in those areas, and I think that's probably, you know, what we're looking at.
Gary?
One question, just for the people that might be listening. Do we have an estimated time from "You Feel It" to "The Water's Hitting Our Beaches"? Is that a generalized number that's available to the public at this point?
Well, there's a range. I mean, one, it varies up and down the coast, but the numbers we hear, like 15 to 20 minutes frequently, the numbers that are used. As far as the beach, if you move inland, it can be up to 30 minutes in areas where it will still be affected. It, you know, takes some time to move over.
I'm thinking, I look at Cutler City for the example, and I'm seeing relatively flat land and nothing impeding it.
Right.
And so the water won't have a hard time getting to there.
Right. Yeah, and the time, like, I don't know if Dogami, they're just the people that can do this stuff. I would assume that as part of their Beat the Wave efforts, they will be able to, by community, estimate the time. You know, and estimate what impact, Cutler City being back in Seletz Bay with, you know, how that is different than Rhodes End, you know, as an example.
Yeah, Rhodes End, it's another bad example.
But, and that's the type of thing that we're hoping the discussions with Dogami will flesh out, and they've done that to a certain extent in other areas.
And I would assume we would also learn through this process whether that area in Cutler City, it's suitable for building a vertical evacuation site, for example?
That's where I think the, that's where I think the need for consulting comes in, is if you start, then you're talking about geology, you're talking about what the wave or the flow height likely is, liquefaction, subside, yeah. I mean, it needs to be a fairly sophisticated evacuation, let alone the size, how many, the demographics, how many people are likely to be there, and all the engineering that goes into these. They're not simple to design.
No.
Do you know how many elderly people live in Cutler City opposed to Rhodes End or Wacoa?
I don't know right now, but I'm, but I'm, we will. That's, I think part of this process, we should be able to flesh out the sort of census statistics. I, and I'm not, the statistics, I was just looking at the 2017 census estimates for Lincoln City, and I think they estimated, how did they phrase this, 25% over 65 that were not vulnerable, disabled, or whatever, I think the term they used, and about 15% that were regardless of, anyway, it's a third, probably. I mean, but again, Cutler's, I mean, every community's a bit different, but I think that's a vital part of what we would want to find out, the demographics, and not only how many people are living in individual houses, but are there centers, are there, you know, multiple housing units where you have even more of a challenge?
Is there any public land east of Cutler City that's elevated that could be used as a potential evacuation site?
Isn't there a private citizen that allows people to escape to? It's just right across the way.
There is an established assembly area across, across the way, essentially across from Freed Gallery and up the hill. It's...
Long walk for...
Well, it's a long way. It's at least half a mile, I think it's half to three quarters, I mean, my little informal measurement. So it's a ways, and this is over not very hospitable ground, very possibly. I mean, no one knows what's between, you know, Fleet Avenue or what, and that place. So yeah, it's quite a, it's quite a walk, and that's part of the fact, that's part of the modeling.
What will you use the $14,000 for? Are there consultants that you'll hire to put this together, or does the state do that with the gal who was here telling us about it?
Well, I think, I think Meg represented DLCD, Land Conserv, and I think they have already been very useful, and they will continue to be. Dogami definitely has people that can do a large part of this, but I'm assuming, you know, there aren't really a lot of people that probably specialize in this specific thing, but there has to be enough sort of seismic, geologic, tsunami awareness to think about the options. And I'm thinking we'll be able to find someone. That's not enough money to do a thorough study, obviously, but it's enough to get the ball rolling.
Yeah, and look at the worst, you can look at the worst possible thing for the worst or the most likely to get tsunami, which would be Cutler City, I would think.
Yeah. It's definitely a vulnerable, vulnerable area. So Meg is, we've talked about, you know, possibility of finding consultants. I mean, I think we've all concluded it's possible, maybe through a university, maybe associated with Dogami, I don't know. We haven't really started to identify those people.
Is there a specific action you need from us tonight, other than to say we lend you our support for this?
That's, that sounds good.
Yeah, I think.
We appreciate your input.
Yeah.
Unless anybody has another idea that they think you should take priority for the use of the $14,000.
Patty?
Yeah. Let me make sure I understand what you're asking for. You want to evaluate Cutler City options, and basically, the options are vertical or horizontal, right? I mean, either you find safety by moving up out of the wave vertically in some sort of structure, which is going to be, I don't know, 100 feet tall to get people up out of harm's way, or you're talking about an option of locating someplace for them to go, right? Which seems like we have that already.
Well, part of the locating somewhere to go is, could be, for example, in Cutler City. There are only two, what, 62nd, 63rd, that kind of lead out of there. Part of getting people out could be strengthening those in such a manner that they stay intact, just as an example. It's not necessarily the destination, it's the path to the destination.
Sure, sure.
So are there, you know, mitigation measures that would make it more likely that more people could get out? So I'm, right, even if, even if horizontal is the solution, even if that's sort of by analysis and modeling, that's, that looks like the best option.
Well, and, you know, another option is to, that Mark mentioned, is that some communities may try to buy out a neighborhood, you know, and just offer them, offer to purchase their properties, move them elsewhere in the community where they're on high ground. So for those people who are vulnerable, who don't really see a way of evacuating in case of a tsunami, you know, they may be interested in that. It would be very expensive, I would think, and we would have to look for a lot of grant money to help us do that, but FEMA may, you know, may consider that. So another option. And maybe there's something else we haven't thought of. I don't know what it would be besides those three things.
And is there a timeframe on this? Do you like this completed within a...
This specific consulting part, in my mind, is two phases. One, ideally, if we can identify someone, is we can get some serious input from it in this, by fall, September, October timeframe, because that's the schedule of when the hazard mitigation grant, planning grant, is due. But I don't, but it won't be complete because we need to wait for this Beat the Wave, because this will have some significant input to it. So probably the end of the year, in answer to your question, you know, by late fall, because that dovetails with when realistically these other things can be put in place.
So is Dogami doing the Beat the Wave modeling all up and down the coast?
That's the idea, but they've done, not at one time. It's staggered, but yes.
So are we on a schedule for that?
Yeah, it's happening this year. This is part of this grant, part of this grant that we're talking about, they'll be doing it. We thought it was going to be earlier in the summer, but it looks like it'll be September or so. We don't have yet a real timeframe, because they're backed up. I think it's fairly time-consuming.
Is there, so are we looking at spending this money to find out something that Dogami can't about Cutler City, or?
Well, it won't necessarily be part of their terms of reference when they do this. I mean, they have certain things they do for the Beat the Wave, and out of it might come some recommendations, but they may not, I think they're looking at it a bit differently. I mean, they're trying to provide raw input that can then be folded into other decisions.
I kind of have a feeling like, would it be beneficial to wait to see what they have as input? Because I feel like they're going to be able to answer a lot of these questions that we might have, and at least if they can give you a real time, like how big is the water going to be, that'll give you an idea of whether or not to go up or stay with the horizontal. I think that would...
Possibly. We don't, we don't, we just don't, we don't control that, and we don't control too much what they actually do when they're on the, a lot of this modeling, they do from their offices. It's not, you know, the...
No, I understand, it's a computer program.
So this grant would be used to hire a consultant to do on-the-ground evaluation?
Well, I think there'd be an outreach component of it. It would work closely with Dogami, hopefully. I mean, but I'm just imagining that, I mean, they have, they do this up and down the coast, they have an idea of what they do. I don't know that, how much leverage we have to change what they do when they do their Beat the Wave modeling. So for example... So, for example, the willing seller type thing is, is not part of their model.
Sure, sure, but I, I get that. Is there any reason why not to wait until we get their information to go ahead with this stuff?
My only reason is there is a grant cycle coming up that's due in October.
And this would be coming out of that?
If we wanted, and if we want input into that, that would, that's my only, otherwise, yeah, it doesn't make so much difference.
If we don't, if we don't have the results of the beat the wave modeling until maybe September or October, is it really feasible to try to meet that grant funding cycle?
Well, the planning grants don't require a, a real project grant where you're trying to build something requires detailed engineering drawings, et cetera, et cetera. I don't, from my reading, I don't think the planning grant necessarily does. That's something I need to confirm. But, I mean, I know it doesn't require the same old detail, obviously.
Is there a time limit to when you need to spend this fourteen thousand dollar grant?
This project runs until next, I think, next June, in theory. If, we may not take it to that point. We may complete it before then by quite a bit. But, but that's the, that's the timeframe on the, on the grant, the way it's written.
So, it hasn't been funded yet, right?
Well, it has been funded. It is a grant. We have a grant for, it's a fourteen thousand dollar matching grant, with the understanding we provide fourteen, they provide fourteen. This is their fourteen we're talking about, if you will.
I mean, it seems to me that if the Dogami is doing its work in the fall, that coincides with efforts by staff to develop this set of recommendations for this area, yeah.
So, yeah, I guess basically the question is, if we're all in agreement that we want to look at Cutler City in more depth in terms of solutions, then we will go about finding a consultant who we feel is going to be able to provide us with the kinds of information we need. And we will develop a scope of work, and all those things take some time. So, you know, if we'll, once we decide what it is we want to do with the fourteen, we'll go ahead and, and get started. And they may, you know, they will know when is best appropriate for them to, to start, actually start work. But I, you know, it usually takes at least, you know, a month just to get your, identify the consultant you want to work with, and get your scope of work, and so forth. So, it's not going to, there's not going to be a lot of extra time in there. So, we can start to move ahead, and then, and then, once we have our beat the wave results, they can just roll right in, into that.
So you're not assuming that the information you get from the beat the wave results will in any, any way impact your scope of work with the consultant?
Well, I guess it could. We don't have, we don't have a lot of facilities in, except for those two intersections in Cutler City, that, that could fail. But, and, and so they would, well, I don't, I'm, I'm trying to second guess what the beat the wave is going to show, but I think it's, you know, it's, it's, it's going to show people are moving kind of slowly.
I think it will show the scope of the problem that needs to be addressed, how many can actually evacuate in that period of time, of the percent, what percentage of the residents can make it and which can't, and where do you go from there with that information?
But is it possible that the beat the wave modeling could result in information that suggests that there are other areas in the city that are just as vulnerable, particularly-
Oh, sure.
-when you factor in the visitors that are here? I don't know how many VRDs are in Cutler City, but if Action Twenty-three is sheltering a large number of tourists and residents, then you factor that in, and you may have other areas of the city that may not have as much land area, but may have a higher density of population to get out.
That's possible.
It's possible. I mean, we don't, we don't know what the, what the beat the wave modeling will show, but it will look at, now, it doesn't make any sense to have a model that sort of somehow lumps the whole city together and give an average, right? So it will be-
No, not from a geologist's perspective.
It will be by, by community in some way, whether that maps what we think of communities or it's some different alignment-
Yeah, probably not.
...based on geology and geography, who knows? But, so, yes, I mean, they, it's guaranteed they will identify other weaknesses in the system. I, I mean, that's, I think-
Which then could adjust your scope of work to the consultant.
Uh-huh, uh-huh. Certainly could. So would you prefer to just wait on this?
I would prefer to wait. I, I just think we would probably be doing more double work, stepping on our own feet.
Yeah, again, the only downside from my perspective is if-
Additional funding.
-we can, you know, and maybe we can do that without this. That's possible. But, in other words, you know, maybe we know enough to, to pursue that.
Well-
I don't know that yet.
Deb's proven to be pretty nimble on her feet in getting grant money from various places, and I'm just-
Trying really hard.
You know, fourteen thousand dollars is not a lot of money-
No.
-from a consulting perspective.
It's not at all.
And, so, to me, you know, I would like to see us maximize the value that we get for that money. And that means to be pretty surgically precise in terms of what the scope of work is to the consultant. And while, you know, you, you may, you may get it right by guessing ahead of the modeling, but I'd, I'd rather see the results of that modeling.
Okay.
Gary?
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, so are we in consensus to wait for the results of the modeling?
Yeah, just revisit the issue when, and, you know, the modeling will be complete at some point in the fall.
Yeah.
That's all they're telling us now.
And then we have, we have until next June to use the grant funds, then, correct?
Yeah.
All right.
Yeah, I mean, so the consulting doesn't have to happen until next-
In late fall, we can revisit this and, and go at it with the, the new information.
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not a problem.
Hey, great. I think-
Thank you.
Focusing on Cutler City is great, because that's clearly one of the most vulnerable sections of our community.
Yes.
Thank you. All right. Going forward, we have, under new business, discussion of relocation requirements for no cause evictions. And we got some material from Sean, who gave it to us two or three or four weeks ago. And then we received some new material this evening, and I believe-
Received the legal-
...the city attorney with us here this evening to help us focus our discussion on this.
Well, the first question was, is this something the Planning Commission can be doing? And I, I tend to think that the answer is no. And I'll tell you why, is that initiation of amendments in seventeen eighty-eight is permitted by motion of the Planning Commission. So you can amend the text of this title, which is Title Seventeen, or the zoning map, or the comprehensive plan map, or the text of the comprehensive plan. You can initiate amendments, legislative amendments, to those items. Title Seventeen, the comprehensive plan map, zoning map, and the text of the comprehensive plan. When you look at the Title Seventeen, it's the zoning regulations of the city and the land development regulations of the city. They are not landlord-tenant regulations. And what the City of Portland did was essentially an additional protective measures for tenants. A Portland renter additional protections is what they called it. Now, if you look at the first line of the handout, that, right after the number, it talks about added by ordinance eighteen seven three eighty, amended by eighteen eighty-eight two nineteen, and there's a whole list, there's several amendments. So this is not something they just came up with. In fact, they just, the last amendment was in March of this year. The way, and I went back and I started reading it from the beginning, and the way this came about was the City of Portland declared an emergency under their emergency powers. They actually have a code provision that talks about, you know, like emergency operations and the kind of things like tsunamis and those kind of things that we declare emergencies about. They actually have a section in their code where they declared a housing emergency, and it's the only emergency that's allowed to last more than a couple of weeks. And so they declared it, and then they started developing plans to deal with the homeless issue and the housing crisis, and recognizing that it was an emergency. So, when you look at authority, okay, we are a charter, we have a charter, and under our charter, the language of our charter is interpreted as broadly to grant, grant of municipal powers as can be. We have really good charter language, it's as broad and gives us as much power as cities have. But that's the legislative authority vested in the city council. The Planning Commission has a narrower focus, and remember the appointive bodies ordinance, and there's a statute that talks about planning commissions, and you implement the comprehensive plan and the land development regulations. So the council has this much authority, and the Planning Commission this much. And so the council's authority is really the place to go if you want to regulate landlord-tenant law, or add additional provisions for landlord-tenant law. That's not to say that I couldn't sit here and try to make an argument to fit it into the comprehensive plan, because, well, we have housing policies, and we have goal ten, and we have to have a mix of housing, and, but the beauty of this for you is that if the city council decides to refer it to you to get your input, then that's within your authority, because your grant of authority says, or such matters is referred to you by the city council. So, I, I'll tell you a little bit more about this, this ordinance, but the short answer is, I don't think you guys can, can work on this. I think you could ask, or I can bring it to the attention of the city council and say, is this something that you would like to look at? This city does not have a housing board. A lot of cities I've worked with have had housing boards, some of them went away, others got reinvented. But basically, you're the only people here that would really be able to provide meaningful input. You looked at the buildable lands inventory and all that, the housing information there, so you would be able to provide a recommendation if the council wished to go in this direction. In short, the, the ordinance that the City of Portland put together started out as just an emergency declaration, there's a housing crisis. They started creating the other ways they were responding to the emergency. They were relieving, waiving regulations in addition to creating tenant protective measures. So they had a number of different, spending a lot of money on, on housing, building things. But this provision, ultimately, after a couple of extensions, it started as an emergency ordinance with a sunset. And it was basically sunsetting, and they came along in March and enacted it on a permanent basis. But, again, it was not, it did not go through the process of going through a planning commission and being reviewed for consistency with the comprehensive plan. It came really out of this emergency process. So I, I'm not saying that it isn't a good thing to provide in your code for relocation costs for tenants who's, get no cost evictions. It's something that was discussed in the legislature. In fact, one of the things that they started with was a ninety-day notice provision that said if you're, if you're going to get a rent increase, you have to have at least ninety days' notice. Well, that got picked up by the Oregon Legislature in two thousand sixteen and was added to ninety-three twenty-three in, in the Oregon statutes. So, some of those things that Portland did got picked up, and they did talk about, last legislative session, they, well, two thousand seventeen session, they talked about some of these same things, relocation assistance. So, I think it's, it's worthwhile to ask the council if they're, have any interest in pursuing these kind of things. I will give you a caveat, they did get sued in federal court, and then they got sued in state court, and then the landlords lost, and then they filed an appeal, and I, I don't know what has happened to that appeal, as of, so.
Well, can't, can't this be used as precedent now? I mean, now, they've kind of gone through all of that, the landlords lost, and the state picked up some.
Well, the landlords lost, I don't know what happened to their appeal. They lost, they got, they lost in circuit court, then went up on appeal. I don't know what's happened to that appeal, may not have been decided yet. But, the, the fact is, it, when it was challenged, it was only a temporary regulation. And then it changed, see all the amendments?
Yeah.
So, they changed it enough that, you know, it might get another challenge. So I just wanted to give you, it's, and it drew a lot of opposition and was very divisive of the landlord-tenant relationship. And, and the other thing I should point out is that, when you go back and look at the ordinances, they're, they start with findings, the council finds. And then they, they go through facts, such as the percentage of rent increase in Portland, and, and the, the, basically, the competent substantial evidence upon which they based this regulation. It wasn't just anecdotal. It was, yeah, there's a real, we've been studying and measuring rents, and, and here's what it is. And, and they had a real issue of very large corporations coming in and buying apartment buildings and just, you know, raising the rent astronomically, giving out, you know, no cause terminations, and just completely changing the character of, of the, of the building. So people couldn't afford to stay. And that was a real, real issue, such that they declared an emergency. I don't know that we have the same facts. I know we have issues with the availability of workforce housing, but I don't know that we have that issue. I don't know of any international corporations buying apartment buildings and kicking everybody out. But, we would have to have an adequate factual base if we were going to start this process. And so, again, the ordinances were based on findings of fact, and so we'd have to go down that same road.
Okay.
You're suggesting that a more effective way to move this forward would be for people who've been personally affected by their relationship with their landlord to request the city council, or to look at that, to see if new ordinances need to be written to protect.
Yeah, I, maybe people have approached you and talked to you about incidences like, like happened in Portland, but no one's come in to talk to me about it. Maybe counselors have been contacted, I don't know. But I think that we could ask the city council if they would like to consider relocation ordinance, and, and if they say, sure, let's send that to the Planning Commission to have them take a look at it, then I think you'd be well within your rights to, to look at it. But I don't really think you can initiate it because of the way the code is written.
Okay, okay.
Do you recommend that we ask them? I don't see a, a lot of apartment houses that are, are evicting tenants right now.
Yeah, I, I don't know that we have the same situation that Portland had. I know we have housing issues, but, but I don't know that we have that same issue. But, I'm more than willing to just, I can mention this, this to the council, we could just report at a council meeting, they want to get the city attorney, they say, do you have anything? And I'll say, well, the Planning Commission's been talking about this, and if you haven't seen it, it requires that you, as a landlord, pay relocation assistance if you give a no cause. Is, is that something the council's interested in pursuing? And if they say, yeah, just like they told me a couple of weeks ago to do ordinance on dog waste, you know, if they, if they think it's something that they want me to spend my time on, and they want to include you, I would recommend the Planning Commission's, as we don't have a housing commission, as the only body that could really provide a recommendation, so.
I, I would appreciate that, if you could bring that up to the council, that would be amazing.
How do the other commission members feel about that? Okay, yeah.
Gary?
I have a slight trepidation about the fact that we keep talking about trying to provide housing for workforce, and things like this are going to cause developers to look at Lincoln City and say, somewhere else.
One of the things-
They're already saying that.
I know, I know, they're already saying that, but I'm saying, when, every time you have regulation controls what that person does- regulation controls what that person does with the land, it tells that person to go somewhere else. Go somewhere else.
One of the fears of the Portland ordinance was that you were going to get, people decide not to be landlords, because they didn't want to have to set aside, you know, four thou, if you rent a three-bedroom, it's like $4,500. You have to give a tenant to relocate if you want to give them a no cause eviction. So, now, again, the ordinance in Portland didn't, well, it's not perfect, okay? But it was, it started as an emergency, and much to my surprise, they, with changes, they tweaked it enough that they felt comfortable they adopted it.
Is, let me ask you, one other side of this that I was looking into was the ability for the average tenant, or group of tenants in an apartment building, could create their own tenants' union, which would combat against some of this stuff on their own. Is there anything preventing a tenants' union in Lincoln City?
I don't know of anything. Again, the only real repercussions of this is, you know, the fact that people may decide, if we want to encourage goaltend, all the different kind of housing types and ranges, we don't want to discourage people offering long-term rentals. And one of the criticisms of this was, you're telling people not to rent long-term because they're going to have to set aside $4,500 in case they want to terminate a tenant, and they don't want to go through the process of finding cause and do the eviction. So, again, there are, there are arguments on both sides here.
Sure, sure.
Does the city have any, is there a compilation of data that, do we know how many renters there are, and how many, what the average rent is for, or how many evictions have occurred in the last 12 months?
I don't think we have that adequate factual base that they articulated in their findings. We have a lot of information based on the buildable lands inventory and our other studies, but I'm not sure that we have what they have. We'd have to assemble that if the council chose to go down this path.
Would there be anything preventing me from collecting said facts?
I would, as a private citizen, you may do whatever you want, but not as a planning commissioner. I mean, remember, authority of the city council, authority of the planning commission.
Yeah, yeah. Just collecting information.
If you collect information as a private citizen, you can do that, but don't do it as a planning commissioner.
Sure, just--
And then if the council says, hey, let's refer this to the planning commission, then you'll share it with the rest of us.
Okay, all right. Well, thank you, Richard. I appreciate all your hard work on this.
So where do we go from here? Do we want to ask Richard to ask the city council to look into this? Is there a consensus on that?
I'd like, I'd like to have the city council authorize us to talk about it a little more and see if there is a problem, but I don't think Lincoln City really has anything other than a shortage of quality housing to be available to the public. Unfortunately, it has a shortfall of those, and people can't live in the community where they work.
I don't hear a strong consensus.
Well, I'll simply--
For asking you to approach the city council.
I'll just let the council know that you had a discussion about it, and if it's something that the council's interested in pursuing, the planning commission wouldn't shy away from it if it was referred to them, so.
Let's leave it at that, then.
Could we also be the housing board?
I don't think that would be a bad idea.
I got some good questions.
Honestly, the, if the number-one priority of the city council is housing, maybe we should, not that we need another board, but that maybe the planning commission could serve as a housing board, and you could reach into these housing-related--
Well, maybe we go that route.
Well, it would be nice to have some facts.
Yeah, exactly.
I mean, you know, I appreciate that--
I have resisted receiving facts, because I didn't have a chance to talk to Richard yet, but I know, I know they're out there. But I just wanted to be clear on things before I went ahead and put my feet in the water. But I think maybe we could recommend to the city council that we have a housing board.
And that we're willing to take that responsibility.
Yes, and that we're willing to take on that responsibility. Does that have a better consensus?
Is there any authority that tracks evictions within Lincoln City?
The sheriff does, doesn't he?
I imagine that, yeah, there's got to be court records.
But those are for cause evictions. They're not for no cause evictions like this addresses.
Yeah.
Getting that data would be much more difficult, I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Patty?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just, I just don't want to see us spin our wheels creating a problem if it isn't there. So I, I'm curious if, I can't imagine that we have an analogous situation to Portland in the conversion, for example, of apartments to condos, or whatever is causing these people to be, to be booted out. But I suppose it's possible that there are people who have had long-term renters who want to turn their home into a short-term rental, and, you know, that would be an individual type of thing, but I just don't know how big of a problem it is.
Well, I can tell you, condo conversions are something that are definitely land use, and when I was in Ashland, that was in the, in the code, and if you wanted to do a condo conversion, you had to go through and actually do, they did some inclusionary zoning conditions associated with that, and they never got challenged on it. But the, so I, if that's what was causing this, then I think you'd be within your rights. But this is not about condo conversions. This is about just the contract between apartment owners and their tenants, and what they're, what they're doing when they get bought out by somebody and they decide to get rid of everybody.
But what, but changing a house that's rented from a long-term rental to a short-term rental, like a VRD, that is a land use issue, isn't it?
Oh, well, it's a licensing issue, and the short-term rental has to go through a land use approval process.
That's done administratively, though, you know.
I'm sorry?
That's done administratively.
Yeah.
So it doesn't come to the planning commission.
So, I have a question, then. With the, with a house that's being rented on a month-by-month, or a long contract, if someone, as a homeowner, comes in and said, oh, by the way, you're being evicted because I'm going to rent my house this summer for a couple of months or three months, and you're now out, does that fall under this? Or is this only condos, apartments?
No, it applied, there was, until March, there was an exception where all single, if you just had one rental, you were not included under the ordinance. It was a huge loophole, but they closed it in March, and they said, no, it applies to everybody. But, yeah, Portland would have you, if you were going to remove somebody for no cause. So it's not like they had six Dobermans and you had a no-pet provision. They didn't violate a term of the lease. You just decided that you wanted to, maybe you wanted to move into the house, and you wanted to have them leave, no fault of their own, but you would give them notice, and after the notice was up, they would, they would have to leave. So Portland basically would make you pay the relocation costs, because it's a no cause. And that has, you know, yeah, sure, it's going to help the tenant, but it's also going to hurt you as the homeowner who just wants to move into their house. Or, you know, maybe you wanted to rent it as a VRD, and you can make judgments of whether that's good or bad, but it's your property. So that's, you'll get pushback from landlords that think you're, once again, telling them what they can do with their property, you know, so.
Thank you, Richard.
Thank you very much.
All right. Is there any other new business? Planning commission training tonight?
No.
Okay. Time for reports and comments from staff. Deborah?
I don't think I have anything tonight. I'm trying to remember if we have any public meetings or anything coming up, and I don't believe we do at this time. But we will be, we have started working on our design standard review, and so we do have a design day already scheduled for a chamber luncheon in, no, we're going to have a design day first, this is sort of an open house, and then we are going to have a visual preference survey that will, our consultants will conduct at a chamber luncheon later in August, so I'll let you know about that, and encourage everyone to go.
All right. And our next meeting is on August 7th. I think it's in three weeks, correct?
Yeah.
Yes.
And I don't think there are any hearings scheduled for that meeting, right?
Kate, do we? No.
All right. Any comments from commissioners? Marie had her hand up first.
I think this probably is a good question for you, Richard. Recently, where I live, we have a VRD across the street, and we've had, it has reached more than its maximum many times, but now they've added a new twist periodically, where a trailer shows up and they hook up. They have the maximum plus in the house, plus they have people living in the trailer. I've reported it, and what's happened is, talking with VRD people, they said, we've called and, you know, told them this, they can't, but nothing has happened. So the people have still continued living there for two or three more days. What is the next action that can be taken, once a report like this has been followed? What's the follow-up? What can we do?
Well, the planning commission really doesn't have any role unless we're doing a revocation proceeding. Then, you know, we can revoke a land use approval, and you do that in accordance with, you know, the statutes and all the procedural safeguards that you would have in a quasi-judicial hearing. But I don't believe that the planning commission initiates revocation. I think staff would bring it to you. But a licensed revocation is usually the first thing, but before you'd even get to that, you, the staff, enforcement staff would, you know, go, come talk to me. I haven't heard anything about this, but certainly I can follow up, and just because you're a planning commissioner doesn't make your complaint any more important than any other complaint, but certainly the, you know, complaints need to be followed up on, and certainly you're not allowed to live in a trailer in a driveway of a VRD or a single-family residence for that reason, for that matter, so.
That is something that we, I'm not sure how much our code says about that, but, you know, in other communities where I've worked, that has gotten to be a big issue, when somebody comes to visit, and in this case, they're visiting a VRD, but even if they're just visiting a permanent resident, and they park their extremely large, you know, RV in the driveway, and how long can they stay there as a visitor? And we could get back to you on what those code requirements--
And we had some issues about this, associated with the eclipse. There was questions of, well, what if we allowed camping everywhere? And so this issue isn't the first time that has happened, but the first time I've heard about it in the context of VRD. But I'll talk to the code enforcement staff and make sure that we're following up. I hadn't heard about this one yet, so.
Patty?
Last year, we embarked on a visioning process.
Yes, we did.
And we involved lots of volunteers in the community.
Yes, we did.
And lots of people donated their time generously and energy to the process, and if I recall correctly, that report was due right after the first of the year.
Yeah.
So now, here we are in July, and I'm wondering, where is that visioning report?
Right behind that grant for a bridge.
Yeah. When Richard comes back, I hope you'll save that question for him, but we have, it has, it has gotten a little bit on the back burner, I'm afraid, but we have been working with Sarah, and she has sent us a format for the final report, and we've gotten back to her on that. As you might recall, we had a very long list of ideas that were generated through all this visioning, and trying to, I think Richard and Sarah have been trying to figure out how to organize that so it is most meaningful, and so I believe that's where they're at. I'm hoping that it's just about ready to get some, a draft to the committee.
Have they been paid all the money that they were contracted for?
No, no. I mean, she is, she is, she is happy and ready to get us the draft as soon as I think the review and the discussion is, brings it to that point.
So I'm just going to request that that be brought forward from the back burner, particularly in light of the fact that we're now talking about another process that is--
Couple more.
That you're thinking about involving community, and we're not going to look so great if we're going back out to the community asking for more volunteers to participate in something else, and they haven't seen the fruits of their labor before.
Right. I certainly appreciate that. Thank you.
Thanks for bringing that up.
Any other questions? Sean?
No, I'm good.
I have a question. Do we know when the city may announce the results of its request for proposals to purchase city properties and develop them?
Oh, Richard, do you know about that? I do not.
You're talking about that whole confidential thing, yeah. No, we're not--
What's happening right now?
Process is ongoing.
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 Is there an end in sight?
It's in process.
Richard, is the, is city staff negotiating with individual interested persons? Is that--
Agreements are out there. We're in process.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. All right.
Should come sooner rather than later, you hope?
I think everybody hopes that.
We always, yeah, we're, we want to get things done.
All right. Well, our next meeting is on August 7th, and I think Kate would like to take a photo of all the commissioners, since we're all here tonight. So if you can hang around just for a bit, that would be great. And the meeting is adjourned.
If you want to take a picture of us in our seats.
So are you ready for your close-up?
The secret developer is who?